We got the thumbs up, so we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you very much for joining us tonight at our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get going. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheetham?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Glad.
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for an invocation offered by Tamlin Carson from the Buddhist representative.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we be a guard for those who need protection, a guide for those on the path, a boat, a raft, a bridge for those who wish to cross the flood. May we be a lamp in the darkness, a resting place for the weary, a healing medicine for all who are sick, a vase of plenty, a tree of miracles, and for the boundless multitudes of living beings may we bring sustenance and awakening enduring like the earth and sky until all beings are freed from sorrow and all are awakened. Evoking the presence of great compassion, let us fill our hearts with our own compassion towards ourselves and towards all living beings. Let us pray that all living beings realize that they are all brothers and sisters, all nourished from the same source of life.
Thank you.
Welcome.
That's good. I love it when Tamlin comes. Thank you very much.
He just likes them.
I like the dogs.
I like her.
I do like her, but I like the dogs also.
I like my family.
I love her. Thank you so much. We'll move to agenda item number three is the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive, excuse me, waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from February 14, 2019 work session, February 14, 2019 executive session, and February 21, 2019 city council liaison work session clarification meeting. B, payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of February 2019. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Joyce Stroshine, chief financial officer, served with the city. Tonight I'm presenting the payroll and material claims report for February. Payroll and material claims totaled $6,632,583. Payroll-related claims, $3,505,370, and we have 671 employees at the end of the month on staff. And we had changes in filled positions, an increase of two in the full-time status, a decrease of one in the half-time status, and an increase of three in the part-time status for an overall increase of four. The next section, I've highlighted large vendor claims, and I've noted one in particular, Construction Services Incorporated, $226,978. This is for street sanitation for the Garrett Way building renovation. Now, the remaining items are listed there for your review, and this report explains 92.09% of all vendor claims for the month. The back of the report, I present you the purchase card activity for February. We had 1,271 transactions on the cards totaling $277,999, and 162 cardholders used their card this month. And then I have listed the four purchase agents who had monthly totals greater than $10,000, and I have listed descriptions of their purchases for your review. This concludes my report.
Any questions, council? Thank you, Joyce.
Water bill, the water litigation bill seems... Are you doing something significant there? So much Simmons and Dunn, III from the bottom.
I know, I can see it there. I can get more information on that.
Would you for me, please?
Mm-hmm. You bet.
Thank you, Joyce. We'll move to C, Human Relations Advisory Committee appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Sean Fay to serve as a member of the Human Relations Advisory Council or committee, replacing Tamra Bassett, who resigned. Mr. Fay's term will begin March 8, 2019, and will expire August 18, 2021. D, African Sister City Subcommittee appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Jesse Kaboko to serve as a member of the African Sister City Subcommittee, filling a long-term vacancy. Mr. Kaboko's term will begin March 8, 2019, and will expire March 8, 2023. E, African Sister City Subcommittee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Martin Jam to continue his service as a member of the African Sister Cities Subcommittee. Mr. Jam's term will begin August 22, 2018, and will expire August 22, 2022. F, council decision, Poline Road Commercial Condominium Short Plaid Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a short plaid for Poline Road Commercial condominium, or for Poline Road Commercial condominium which subdivides approximately .25 acres of land into two condominium units, subject to conditions. The property is located at 2830 Poline Road. G, council decision, vacation of public's interest in the right-of-way between Ruby Street and Pocatello Creek Road. Council may wish to adopt this decision vacating the public's interest in the right-of-way between Ruby Street and Pocatello Creek Road. H, donation acceptance, 2014 Jeep Wrangler Rubicon. Council may wish to accept a donation of a 2014 Jeep Wrangler Rubicon from Idaho Central Credit Union. Council may also wish to accept cash and sponsorship donations from Filmeeter Toyota and SoundSource in the amount up to $12,000 for parts and labor to customize the vehicle. The vehicle will be used in the Pocatello Fire Department Fire Prevention Program. All modifications made to the vehicle will be paid for by donation and sponsorships from the community at no cost to the city.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Cheetham. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item four is a communication of proclamations. We do not have any proclamations, but I do see we have a scout troop out there. Who's in charge over there? Not you, sir. Sir, not you. You're not in charge. One of the scouts is.
I know, I'm not.
Okay.
That's what I was going to say.
All righty.
Yeah, these scouts are interested in your government, so they're here to work on their citizenship in the community, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Can I get one of the scouts? Who's the scout leader in those scouts? The patrol leader? Who's in charge of you three?
That'd be the one in uniform, isn't it?
Well, there's two in uniform.
How about three?
I don't care which one it is. One of you jump up. Thank you. There you go. What are you nervous about?
Just teasing.
Could you tell us what troop you're from and where you're from?
Troop 316.
316?
360.
360. Thank you very much. Right here in Pocatello?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for being with us tonight. Don't see any other scouts, and so I've got no one else to harass. We will move on to agenda item number five is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On March 14 at 9:00 a.m., we have a work session immediately followed by a budget development meeting. March 21 at 3:00 p.m. will be council liaison work session clarification meeting. March 21 at 5:30 p.m. will be a clarification meeting, and at March 21st at 6:00 p.m. will be a regular city council meeting. Other events, annual spring cleanup at the city cemeteries begins April 1st. Crews will remove all, remove and discard all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations, et cetera, they are placed on cemetery, on a cemetery space if they wish to avoid disposal of an item by staff. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. Then we'll move to agenda item six, a request for reconsideration of council decision. Council may wish to consider a motion for reconsideration filed by Gypsy Holding LLC and Hanson Janitorial Supply Incorporated, represented by Racine Olson, PLLP, regarding the council decision of February 7, 2019, on the appeal of the hearing examiner's approval of conditions used for transitional housing at 209 East Lewis Street. The original request was from Idaho Housing and Finance Association, represented by BJ Stenzlin of Aid for Friends.
Mr. Mayor, I move we uphold our previous decision.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Manon. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize. I messed up. That doesn't surprise me. I was supposed to make the announcement at the beginning of the meeting, halfway through it, that there was published a historic preservation plan, public hearing was published for today. If you are here for that public hearing, it has been postponed to April 4, 2019. And so I apologize, I did not let you know earlier. I had obviously forgotten to do that, but that did not get put on the agenda, so we cannot have a public hearing on that. All right. Can I go now? All right. Agenda item seven, Final Plaid Stratton Estates. Derek Leslie of Holmes West, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted a final plaid for approval. The property is located on an extension of east end, on the east end of Troy Lane. It encompasses 3.06 acres, more or less, and is 16 lots. It is located within a residential medium-density, single-family zoning district and is to be known as Stratton Estates. At their meeting on September 26, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with conditions. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this final plaid for Stratton Estates based on following the recommended conditions.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, Request for Waiver of Sanitation Fees. Council may wish to consider a request from Pocatello Free Clinic to waive sanitation fees in the amount of $152.50. The Pocatello Free Clinic is moving to a new facility and would like to have a dumpster available. Do dispose of supplies which will not be moved to the new facility.
Mr. Mayor, I move we deny the request for the waiver.
Second. We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Adamson. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, Human Resources Policy Changes. Council may wish to adopt policy changes impacting the following. A, cap of vacation payout at 400 hours effective September 1, 2019. B, payout retiree sick leave to HRA VIBA effective September 1, 2019. C, mandatory case disease management for participants in the health benefits program effective October 1, 2019. And D, separate active employees and retirees in the health care experience effective October 1, 2019.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve all four items, A, B, C, and D.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Councilwoman Lurick.
I would like to make an amendment to consider A, B, and C together and D separately.
Is there a second to that?
Second. I wanted to make sure, Linda, I think you wanted to do...
So read over those and double-check and make sure A, B, and C is correct.
I'm sorry, they're in a different order. Item B, so A, C, and D together and item B...
Separately?
Yes.
Okay, so we have an amended motion to hear A, C, and D together and discuss B separately. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Second, sir.
That's okay. We have a second on that motion by Manon. Is there any other discussion?
I would like to hear from Heather just briefly in terms of these items, so that those present might understand what we're dealing with.
So are you talking A, C, and D?
All four.
All four?
All four. We can discuss all four.
Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director. Let me get my things in the same order as they're on the agenda. It's different.
Through your curveball.
You did. A, which is cap vacation payouts at 400 hours effective September 1st. Vacation time is a benefit. While it's not usually tied to medical benefits, it is given for the overall health of an employee for time away from work. Currently, an employee can have 400 hours at the beginning of the year, and they continue to accrue up until December. This would change, they would continue to accrue, but we would not do any payouts over 400 hours, which is the same as our year-end cap. This would be effective end of this year or so, September 1st. Any questions on that item? Item two, payout retiree sick leave into HRA VIBA. We've answered a lot of questions on what VIBA can be used for. If you are working and you're on Medicare, then you have to limit what your VIBA is used for. If you are retired and on Medicare, you do not have to limit your VIBA. Medicare will automatically pay first, and then VIBA will kick in after that, so you don't have to use your VIBA money first, nor do you have to designate it to dental and vision. This is the item that has had the most controversy among employees, and we have some communications in that matter. There is no way to grandfather this. We can't do partial implementation now and partial implementation later. It has to be a set date. Any questions on that item?
So I want to be clear, if you retire, we put all of the money into VIBA, the HRA VIBA.
That's correct.
And you have a job and you go to work again, you can use this money for...
You can use this for any IRS Code 213D item, which is any out-of-pocket expense. It can be your supplement. The only way there's a limitation is if you are on Medicare and working with it. Otherwise, it is just spent as medical dollars.
Okay.
And one other clarification, the requirement that, or...
The grandfathering.
The grandfathering issue, the reason we're not allowed to do that, that's a requirement by the IRS?
That's IRS. That's an IRS limitation of the plan.
So it's all or nothing?
That is correct.
I mean, it has to be at one time?
Good.
Okay. Any other on that item?
Okay.
Case management tied to HRA VIBA. Any employee who's enrolled in our medical plan, they're eligible for VIBA dollars. If they were to decline case management, as referred to, referred into by Blue Cross, they would not be eligible for their VIBA dollars. If at a time they decided to join case management, they would then be eligible. This will affect between 5% to 15% of our employees, so this is going to be less than 70 people. Most cases would last three to four months, and then they would move out of case management. There is no additional cost to the employee for this program, and HR in the city would not know what employees are in case management. We would only know when an employee declines.
Who decides that? I'm sorry. Who decides who needs to be in case management and who doesn't?
Blue Cross is the primary decision-maker. Our broker can help refer people into the program, but it is ultimately Blue Cross's decision.
Okay.
And it's just employees, correct?
Just employees. If your spouse or your child is referred to case management and they're on your plan and they decline, there is no impact to your VIBA. It is only for the employee.
Okay.
And the last item is moving retirees into their own health insurance pool. This has a couple impacts. One is financial reporting required by the city. It would likely double the rates for the group of retirees. We currently have 25 people on the plan. They can go out on the open market and look for other insurance that are not required to stay on our plan.
There is help available, too?
There is. Our broker has some people in place who can help with that transition if you decide to move off the retiree pool onto the open market. The reason for the increase in rates to the retirees is they'd be moving from a large group plan to a small group plan, and their experience is also running very high.
Any other questions?
I speak in favor of the motion. We're going to have to do this at some point, and this is the year of really tough decisions, and I think we ought to just do it.
You're speaking to the second motion.
I'm speaking to everything.
Speaking to all of it. Okay, so let me be, thank you, Heather. Let me be clear, while we have on the table right now, we have an amended motion. The amended motion is to consider A, C, and D separately than B. The motion was made by Councilwoman Lurick and was seconded by Councilwoman Manon. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
This is just to separate them out.
This is just to separate them out.
Yes. Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
No.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Johnston?
No.
Okay, the motion passes, so I would entertain a motion now, council, for consideration for A, C, and D and/or B.
I'd like to make a motion.
Councilwoman Lurick?
Does it need to be two separate? I can make a motion on B and then a motion on A, C, and D?
What I would do is make a motion on A, C, and D, or make a motion only on B. Let's consider that, and then we'll look for another motion after that.
Then let me go ahead and start with B. I make a motion that we delay the implementation of B for one year, so that there is some time for planning.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion, the motion by Lurick, second by Manon, to delay B by one year, moving retiree sick leave into HRA VIBA by one year.
So effective September 1, 2020.
2020. Okay. Any discussion? Councilman Bray.
You know, we had a long day, and I've been making the decisions up here for almost 12 years now, and it was one of the most gut-wrenching ones to have to do in terms of employees, their pay, their benefits, how those benefits can be pocketed or used. And for me, the telling thing was when we had to drop back to the lowest recommended category for raises and steps because costs are out of control. And I was really thinking that a few of these might not, should pass before that. And after that discussion, I realized we've got to take the bull by the horns and manage things, at least my perspective is, that we've got to manage our costs at every level so that employees will have the biggest range of management available to them in terms of their salaries. And so it might look like we're micromanaging in some areas, but what we're really doing is, I believe, is opening this up so that employees will have the opportunity to get the pay raises that they should have, because we're monitoring costs. We've got to start, we've got to do this wherever we can. I know there's incidents and there's applications to everybody, but whenever we do this, there's going to be somebody that feels harmed. It's just my take on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask, Heather, is there a difference in financial burden to the city whether we pay out in sick pay or we pay it in HRA VIBA?
There's a very small impact. It would be negligible. It'd be the difference in FICA. The other difference would be the very small amount that goes into the workers' comp program. They are very small. We're talking less than $5,000 a year.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion by Lurick, a second by Manon. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
No.
Bray?
No.
Cheetham?
No.
Johnston?
No.
Okay. That motion fails. Council, I would entertain another motion.
I move we adopt items A, B, C, and D as recommended.
Okay. We have another motion by Johnston.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second by Bray. Any discussion? Okay, Shawnee, we have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Councilman Bray. Could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
No.
Lurick?
No.
Manon?
No.
I told you you were going to vote on this today.
This is always exciting. No, that's perfectly, okay. Well, we voted the one differently, A, B, and so with that, I'll read the tea leaves and I will say yes. Thank you very much. I will tell you, it was a gut-wrenching day today. I know that. We'll move to agenda item 10, Griffith Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the Griffith Road sanitary sewer improvements. A, accept the lowest responsive bid received on February 5, 2019 from A Plus Contractors in the amount of $318,747 for the total bid, and if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement between the City of Pocatello and A Plus Contractors in the amount of $318,747 for the Griffith Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, subject to legal department approval. The project includes the installation of new 18-inch sewer lines, manholes, service reconnections, bypass sewer pumping, and surface repairs. If approved, the work will begin in mid-March and will be completed within or before 60 days from the start of the date. Funds for the project are budgeted and available in the Water Pollution Control, WPC, fiscal year 2019 capital account.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I move that we approve agenda item number 10, the Griffith Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements, subject to legal department review, and authorize you to sign the agreement.
Okay. We have a motion by Manon and a second by Cheetham. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Manon?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, Cooperative Agreements Municipal Watershed Fence. Council may wish to authorize the execution of two cooperative agreements in support of improvement of the municipal watershed fence. A, an agreement between the City of Pocatello and United States Forest Service, subject to legal department review, and B, an agreement between the City of Pocatello and Idaho Department of Fish and Game, subject to legal department review. There will be no cost to the city. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve these cooperative agreements for the municipal watershed fence, subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Declaration of Surplus Property Water Pollution Control, WPC. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of WPC staff and declare the following equipment as surplus. A, Pier Point Camera and Tractor P420 Discollection System Line Inspection Camera was purchased in 2000 and is beyond its serviceable life. And B, SP815 Mud Cat Dredge. This specialty equipment was purchased in 1987 and is beyond its serviceable life. If approved, WPC staff is requesting council's authorization to dispose of items in whatever way is most advantageous to the city. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the equipment sale, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor, as this is disposed of, let's say a city employee wanted to buy some of this. Is that legal? I didn't think so.
No, that would be inappropriate.
Inappropriate, okay. I move that we authorize this action to be taken under Agenda Item Number 12 and authorize your signature as needed.
Second. We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Cheatham. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Facilities Use and Recreation Programs Policy, Parks and Recreation Department. Council may wish to adopt the Facilities Use Recreation Programs Policy for the Parks and Recreation Department as presented to the City Council at the December 13, 2018 Work Session. The policy includes revisions to Pocatello Municipal Code 5.06, Commercial Activities in Parks and Other Public Places, and 12.36, Public Parks as Approved by City Council at the February 21, 2019 Regular Council Meeting. The policy document provides guidelines and regulations regarding use of city facilities and recreation program participation. Councilwoman Manon?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 13, Facilities Use and Recreation Program Policy.
Second.
We have a motion by Manon and a second by Adamson. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, Bid Acceptance and Procurement Agreement for Snowplow Blower Airport. Council may wish to affirm its prior determination regarding the bids for a snowplow blower for Pocatello Regional Airport, as voted upon at the regular council meeting held September 6, 2018, declaring Oshkosh Products LLC to be the lowest responsive bidder. A, accept the lowest responsive bid from Oshkosh Airport Products LLC in the amount of $649,267. A bid from Kodiak America LLC was submitted in the amount of $561,278 and was deemed unresponsive as it did not meet the technical requirements of the specifications. A protest from Kodiak was received and reviewed by staff after a thorough review, awarding the bid to Oshkosh is still recommended if the bid is accepted. And B, authorize the execution of the procurement agreement and notice of award between the City of Pocatello and Oshkosh Airport Products LLC in the amount of $649,267, subject to legal department review. The purchase will be funded 93.75% by FAA grant funds and 6.25% by airport passenger facility charge, PFC funds. The purchase is contingent upon FAA approval. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we affirm our prior determination regarding the snowblower or snowplow for the airport, that we accept the lowest responsive bid, and that we authorize the execution of procurement agreement with regard to that bid.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Lurick. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
No.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item 15, is an ordinance. 15A, An Ordinance Vacating the Public's Interest in a Right-of-Way of the 400 Block of Poole Avenue. Said vacation was approved by council decision dated February 21, 2019, and all conditions contained therein have been met. Council, how do you wish the ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bray.
I move the ordinance Agenda Item Number 15A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. Second, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you, Jared. Could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho abandoning and vacating a portion of the right-of-way in the 400 Block of Poole Avenue located in the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 22, Township 6 South, Range 34 East, Boise, Meridian, Vanette County, Idaho, and more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A, providing that the public right-of-way herein vacated shall be distributed in its entirety to the adjoining property owner and developer, Jonathan Vincent, in accordance with Idaho Code Section 50-311 and 50-1306A as deemed to be in the best interests of the owner of the vacated property and for the public good, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
So the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter. All right. I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass? Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 15B, An Ordinance Rezoning Two Parcels of Land Totalling Approximately 38.35 Acres Located in the Recent North Gate Annexation North of Chubbuck Road and West of Olympus Drive From Residential Medium Density Single Family RMS To Commercial General CG To Residential Commercial Professional RCP. Amending the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation For Those Same Parcels To Mixed Use And Amending the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation For An Additional 21.04 Acres To Mixed Use. Council, how do you wish this ordinance be read?
Before you respond, I wish to recuse myself from voting and participating in the discussion on this item.
Thank you.
I would move that ordinance Agenda Item Number 15B be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson. Shawnee, could you please call the roll? I was thinking Shawnee, but saw, was reading Connie. Shawnee, would you please read the roll? Call the roll.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Recuse.
Oh, thank you. Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, changing approximately 32.40 acres of land from zoning designation residential medium-density single-family and approximately 5.95 acres of land from zoning designation commercial general to residential commercial professional, both parcels being identified as attractive land in the southeast quarter of Section 2 and the southwest quarter of Section 1, Township 6, South, Range 34 East, Boise, Meridian. Said parcel depicted in Exhibit A attached here too, changing the designation on the comprehensive planned use map for the property depicted in Exhibit B attached here too, from residential and commercial to mixed use, changing the designation on the comprehensive plan land use map for the approximately 21.04 acres of land depicted in Exhibit B from